Good evening, I'd like to call the Monday, August 12th, 2024 Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tracy, if I could get a roll call for attendance, please.
Of course. Commissioner Ingersoll? Commissioner Humphrey? Commissioner Stockenberry? Commissioner Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Present.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Present.
Commissioner Graham?
Present.
Commissioner Howe?
Here.
Chairperson Henning?
Here. Thank you, Tracy. Thank you and welcome to tonight's meeting and those watching from home. I'm gonna run through tonight's agenda, consists of the minutes from the July 22nd meeting. UDC text amendment for Feds setbacks. Rezoning and general development plan for small sliders. Conditional use permit, preliminary plat, and final plat for Google Fiber MCI hut 156. A preliminary plat and final plat for Sire Estates. Final plat and site plan design review for Dutch Brothers Coffee. Community development monthly report for July, and we'll follow that with adjournment. At this time, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda for July 22nd. So moved. And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. This time, we'll move on to number two. I will open the public hearing for Agenda Item Two, the UDC text amendment. UDCT dash zero seven dash two four dash nine two three zero for fence setbacks. I will ask for exhibits from our city attorney, John Mullein.
Staff admits exhibits one through five, as shown on item two on the agenda.
Thank you, John. Any of those here that would like to speak in favor of or against, or speak on this item's behalf, please get sworn in as a group. Anybody out there? Alright, just staff.
I do.
Alright, Mike?
Alright, thank you Chair. Planning Commissioners, Mike Mallon, 903 West Main Street, on behalf of the city, and I was just sworn in. Tonight's UDC text amendments is regarding fence setbacks. It is an amendment to, hold on one second here. It is an amendment proposed to Section 407.040D3 under the buffers, screens, and fencing, other fence design standards section of the Unified Development Code. The proposed text amendment is being proposed at the direction of City Council, who asked us to look into this. We've had some issues with the way the code is written today, and so staff is proposing some amendments to help provide clarity to the code so that it can be better interpreted by staff during the fence permitting process. It's more clear to homeowners, residents, and fence contractors in the city regarding the fence location standards. Some of you on Planning Commission may remember that we've had quite a few fence UDC amendments over the last five years regarding how the fence pickets face and other items like that. And so fences are quite an important part of separation between the physical property and ownership of people in the city, and so that's why these tend to keep coming up. The code as it reads today does not have any of the line work here, the strike through or the underline line. Basically says the fences may be located so that the fence face is at or near the property line. Otherwise, the fence shall be set back at least three feet from the property line. We've had a few instances over the past year where that interpretation of what is at or near the property line has been called into question, or has been interpreted differently by different members of city staff. And also, the three feet setback has also caused some issues as well, as to whether that a setback from the property line is the best way to handle that situation, or is it, should it be setback from another fence, or both, whichever is more restrictive. The goal of the three foot setback is to, if there's an existing fence along the property line, right at the property line, then the next fence should be set three feet in, and that three feet area should be enough to allow somebody to get in there with a lawnmower or weed eater to maintain that grass or weeds or brush that grows up in there. Anything less than three feet is really kinda hard to maintain. And so, the amendments proposed this evening seek to help clarify these these regulations. With the stricken text and the additional text, the new code would read fences may be located so that the fence face is at or within six inches of the property line, which for reference is about the size of a dollar bill. And regarding the three feet, it says otherwise, the fence shall still be set back three feet from the property line absent more specific standards in these regulations. And then, to make this perfectly clear, we've added a fence shall not be constructed or maintained parallel to or generally following an existing fence unless the fences are at least three feet apart or directly abutting. So if there's an existing fence that's at or near the property line, we do give, by interpretation, the next fence in, the guy who wants to add a fence, we do say that it has to be three feet, or it can be right up against it so that there is no room for weeds or grass to grow. So this is clarifying that interpretation that staff's been making for a number of years. But it's saying regardless of the three foot setback, or whatever other odd situation that may come up with a previously existing fence and a new fence that wants to go in, at no point should those two fences ever be closer than three feet from each other. So just adding two sets of clarifying language to the code as it sits today. The proposed amendments were presented to the Development Advisory Commission on August 6th, and they voted three to zero in favor of recommending these to the Planning Commission. Staff has reviewed these proposed amendments against the code criteria in Section 403020 for UDC text amendments, and finds that it meets those criteria, and therefore staff recommends approval of this, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any Commissioners have any questions? Seeing none, we'll hear from applicant, which is also yourself, and I assume you have nothing else to add than what you already have as an applicant versus the city.
I would only add, now I think about it, that during the fence, and this is for the Commissioners' sake, but also the public's sake, during the fence permitting process, staff does not currently require an official survey of the property that goes along with the building permit application. We allow homeowners to submit a plot plan, such as what was submitted when they built their house, or a copy of their lot from their subdivision plat map. If we were to require a formal survey for each property whenever we did a building permit, that could run anywhere from three to five hundred dollars, maybe up to a thousand dollars depending on the size of the property. And sometimes that's staff feels that that would be overly burdensome to do to the residents or the property owners, and sometimes that may even outweigh or be over half the cost of that fence permit itself. So just wanted to make sure that you understood that is also the justification for why we came up with within six inches. The previous code at at or near the property line was intended to say finding a property line in the field is really hard, if not impossible, unless you have property pins on newer subdivisions, or you get a formal state survey. And so, within six inches is our best attempt to get it as close to that property line as possible, but allowing some leeway still based upon the inexact permitting process that we have.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of? Anybody who would like to speak in opposition to? Seeing none, I will close the public comments section of this hearing. Any other discussion or comments from the staff, or applicant, and applicant, I should say? What about the Commissioners? Any other questions, comments? I'll just add a comment to me, it just seems like it makes sense so that there's no more ten inch, eighteen inch gaps that go unmaintained, so. Having said that, I will close the public hearing. And I'm open for a motion on the UDC text amendment. Chair? Yes, sir.
I'd move to approve UDC text amendment UDCT zero seven seven four, or two, sorry, zero seven two four nine two three zero fence setbacks.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, Tracy, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Humphrey?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairperson, uh, Henning?
Aye. Thank you. This item will be recommended and heard by the City Council at their next meeting on August 19th. At this time, I will open the public hearing for Agenda Items Three and Four. The rezoning, RZ zero six dash two four dash nine two zero six, and general development plan, GDP zero six two four nine two oh seven for small sliders. I will ask for exhibits from our city attorney, John Mullein.
Staff admits exhibits one through eight as shown on our Items Three and Four on the agenda.
Thank you, John. I will ask at this time for those in the audience that want to speak on this project, or staff be sworn in.
I do.
Thank you all. We're not quite ready for you. You can hang out there if you want. We're gonna hear from the city first, and Ms. Chantel Frye will tell us what you got.
Chairman and Commissioners, Chantel Frye, 903 Main Street, Blue Springs, Missouri, on behalf of the city. Before you this evening, we have a request for a rezoning and a general development plan for a proposed development of a small sliders drive-through restaurant located at the southwest corner of Mo Seven Highway and south of northwest Mock Avenue. The property is currently zoned as a general business with a planned unit development overlay. The first request is to rezone this property from the GB PUD to a general business zoning. The 2014 comprehensive plan included the subject property as a corridor reinvestment area, which is currently developed areas along the significant transportation corridors where specific site and building designs were the balance of transportation functions. The PUD officially was laid on this property on the site above for strict use of office buildings, which is no longer a use, and so rezoning that to a general business would allow the proposed development and other future developments to be used under general business. And the general land use mapped as a future land use would allow for mixed-use employment dominant, mixed-use service entertainment dominant, and high-density residential and open space. Staff believes the rezoning to the general business is in accordance with the comprehensive plan as it allows the subject property to be efficiently utilized for the restaurant with the drive-through access. The second request is for a general development plan, which would accommodate a development that covers approximately 0.6 acres. The general development standards identify that all regulations not specified shall conform to the requirements for each use. Our most compatible zoning district is outlined in the UDC, which is why the proposed general business rezoning is here tonight. There are currently two existing buildings which are going to be demolished. The proposed development is classified as a general commercial building, which includes a 930 square foot building, which will have a drive-through, an outdoor seating area, and associated parking. The site is proposed to be developed in a single phase, and access to development will be provided on northwest Mock Avenue along the northern boundary of the property, with additional access to the property being proposed from an existing access point on Mo Seven Highway, which is also near the site's southernmost corner. The access point will allow vehicles to have a right-in turn and right-out turn onto Mo Seven Highway. MoDOT reviewed the site plan and surrounding area stating it did not appear to require a full traffic impact study, and the final approval memo from MoDOT will be submitted during the site plan review process. The applicant is proposing fifteen parking spaces for the site and all parking stalls, which would meet the minimum size requirement. The site is only required seven parking spaces due to the small square footage of customer service area. There are twenty-five stacking spaces which will be available through the drive-through for customers. The proposed development will not disturb any new land and will be using the existing land. Based on the BMP manual, the improvements will not require any water quality measures because the project does not consist of more than one acre. There is existing sanitary sewer service line located on the property. Per the general development, or per the general business zoning district standards designated open space for this site is 12%. The development will have significant landscaping and placement of a six-foot wood privacy fence on both the south and west property lines, given the close proximity to lower-density residential units, which will aid in mitigating noise and headlights. The applicant is proposing an internal sidewalk, and these sidewalks will be adjacent along the exterior of the building footprint. These are proposed at eight feet, and there will be parking boards placed along the north side of the building to protect the outdoor seating area. The site will have a distinctive and modern exterior design that utilizes shipping containers. The metal surfaces of the containers are left exposed and painted in vibrant colors. The modular nature of this structure allows for a compact and efficient layout, and each container can serve for a specific purpose such as a dining area, kitchen, and storage. The buildings in site design are required to meet the non-residential design standards and the UDC section requirements for a minimum of 26-gauge thickness and a minimum of one-inch depth, offset with panels, and they do meet the standard with a 24-gauge thickness. The applicant is requesting one alternative development standard to the site location, which is a reduction in the landscape buffer along Mo Seven Highway and the southwest property line. This request is due to the total required buffering area exceeding 10% of the lot area and the utilization of the existing buffer along Mo Seven Highway. The proposed general development plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all requirements of the UDC. The applicant has requested the one deviation or modification to the UDC, and staff recommends approval of the general development application with the three conditions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the Commissioners have any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? Chair? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mallon, I have a question for you. I know in the years past, we, a question came up before, how many establishments could we have in one area? I think we had a question about dollar stores before, payday loans, that we had too many in one area. Is this a part of the city's comprehensive plan? If we have a lot of fast food restaurants in the same area, is there, is that a part of the plan? Does it make a difference, or is there any discussion?
Yes, certainly understand the question. It is not part of the city's comprehensive plan whether we have too many of a certain kind of business in an area, or if they're clustered together, except for a few land uses that the City Council has determined they wanted to provide additional requirements to, such as body art, tobacconist, payday lending. Those are the only three off the top of my head that I can remember that have those restrictions. Otherwise, it's, you know, free market, free economy, and oftentimes similar types of land uses like to locate near each other, such as fast food restaurants, gas stations, even pharmacies, Walgreens, CVS tend to locate in close proximity to each other. And so, it is not something that the city has in its review criteria, nor something that the city considers when looking at that, is if we have too much of a certain land use within close proximity to one another, unless it's one of those ones that I previously mentioned that have specific criteria that were added to the code. And this is not one of those.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Would the applicant like to speak about their project?
Sure. Mark Pareda, I'm a resident of Blue Springs. I'm the franchisee of Small Sliders, Louisiana-based franchise, actually just moved to Georgia, they're now Georgia-based. Fifteen restaurants open right now, they have 250 to 300 in development now, over 21 states. We do have 10 signed for the Kansas City area, and this will be our first one, so pretty excited to bring to my hometown. Been here since I was 10 years old. That's really it. Appreciate you guys' time tonight.
Well, thank you very much.
Yep.
I'm Randy Purdue with Cal Valley Engineering, Site Civil Design, and just really believe that, as you said, this meets the area's criteria. I mean, it brings an establishment that's much like the neighboring businesses in the area, and it'd be a great addition to your community.
Thank you, guys. Anything else from you?
No.
Alright. Being this is a public hearing, is there anybody out there that would like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this project? Hearing none and seeing none, I will close the public comments section of this public hearing. Any other discussion from staff or comments from staff?
I have none.
Anything else from the applicant?
No.
Commissioners, questions? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Alright. I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion from fellow Commissioners on the rezoning portion. Chair? Yes, sir. Move to approve rezoning RZ zero six two four nine two zero six, smalls sliders. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, and a roll call, please, Tracy.
Yes. Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Humphrey?
Aye.
Chairperson Henning?
Aye. This motion passes and will be recommended and heard by the City Council at their next meeting on August 19th. At this time, I'll ask for a motion for the general development plan.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve general development plan GDP zero six two four nine two zero seven for smalls sliders with the three staff conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And another roll call, please, Tracy?
Yes. Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Humphrey?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chairperson Henning?
Aye. Thank you, Tracy, and again, this item will be recommended and heard by the City Council at their next meeting on August 19th. Moving on, I will open the public hearing for Agenda Item Five and Six and Eight. Conditional use permit CUP zero six two four nine two zero two for Google Fiber MCI hut 156, with Items Six and Eight heard concurrently. I will ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Mr. John Mullein, again.
Staff admits exhibits one through eight as shown on our Item Five on the agenda.
Thank you, John. Any of those here that would like to speak on behalf of this project, please stand and be sworn in.
I do.
Thank you. Dave McCumber, do you have a presentation for us on this project?
Absolutely. Dave McCumber, 903 West Main Street, on behalf of the city, I have been sworn in. Good evening. Before you is a planning application for a conditional use permit with an alternative development standard, a preliminary plat and a final plat. The project is for Google Fiber MCI hut 156, that's located at 2201 Northwest South Outer Road. The property today is currently zoned general business, and the proposed land use is a utility major, which is required to obtain a conditional use permit in the general business zoning district. Alright, the 360-square-foot fiber hut will be utilized to store equipment that will aid the expansion of the Google Fiber Network in the city of Blue Springs and surrounding areas. Google has leased approximately 1,800 square feet from the landowner for the hut. The hut will be screened and secured using an eight-foot-tall vinyl fence on four sides. The applicant has described the hut as an unmanned facility that is visited by field personnel on a weekly basis. The hut's exterior consists of tan-colored aggregate but will largely be behind the vinyl fence. An alternative development standard is being requested by the applicant for relief from the UDC section on parking, which according to this land use equates to one off-street parking space required. The applicant has stated that a lease on the land for the exact square footage needed for the hut and its surrounding fence did not account for an off-street parking space. Furthermore, the applicant believes that given the length of the driveway from the Northwest South Outer Road and the infrequency of which the site will be visited, there should be no concerns of safety for traffic from vehicles parked in the driveway. Staff has reviewed the application according to the requirements and standards of the UDC and recommends approval of the conditional use permit with conditions, the preliminary plat with conditions, and final plat with conditions. And with that, they open it for questions.
Any question for staff? I have one question about the fence. It's a six-foot vinyl fence.
It's eight feet, but yes, it is a vinyl fence.
And what color is it proposed to be?
So, it doesn't have a specific color listed on there, but in speaking with the applicant, there was some discussion around being able to modify that fence with the fence company to be of earth tones. And I will just mention that that is similar colors to the buildings that are in the immediate area as well.
Anybody have any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant?
One question. If you look at the diagram, it looks as if there's a parking space there. Is that accurate, or is that changed?
So that is actually equipment that's sitting there, a generator of some sort.
Thank you.
But that's, yeah, on the inside of the site there.
Yes, sir, you got it.
Kind of looks like a car from up top.
Any other questions before we hear from the applicant? You're not on. Slide the switch at the base.
Oh, there it is.
He's on.
It's got a short.
Okay.
Now it's on.
There you go.
Okay. The 36.75 dimension from the center line of the road, is that from the offset? I think you may be looking at the dimension that's listed for, from the fence face to the property line, maybe? Okay. That's the number I'm seeing there. Is it right here? Yeah, so you have forty feet of depth of the driveway? Yeah, to the property line, and then additional feet out to the edge of pavement of the street. Okay, thanks for that.
Any other questions? Alright, would the applicant like to speak on their project?
And I'm Robert Vicaro, here with BHC, we're the civil firm doing this project. Generally, the plan presented was pretty conclusive, mostly here to just answer questions. Happy to go over whatever's needed.
Thank you very much. Anybody out there would like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody want to speak in opposition? Alright, I will close the public comments section of this public hearing. Any further discussion from staff?
No, sir.
The applicant?
None from us.
Commissioners? I would just add, my original question is that upon driving by and seeing the location, I think it's very unique. It's a good spot for something like this. I would ask that the fence be something earth toned and something that will blend well. I'll leave that up to staff.
Sounds good, yeah.
Alright, having said that, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion from one of my peers. And ask for a motion from one of my peers. For the conditional use permit, we'll start there.
Chair.
Sir.
I would move to approve the conditional use permit for Google Fiber MCI Hut CUP dash zero six dash two four dash nine two oh two with the three staff conditions.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Tracy, would you give us a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Humphrey?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennig?
Aye. That motion carries and will be recommended and heard by the city council on August nineteenth. And I would ask for a motion on the preliminary plat.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would move for approval of the preliminary plat for Google Fiber MCI Hut one fifty-six, um PP dash oh six dash two four dash nine two oh four with the one staff condition.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That passes. And a final motion I will ask for on the final plat.
Chair, might as well finish.
Thank you, sir.
Move for approval of the final plat for Google Fiber MCI Hut one fifty-six, which is PF dash zero six dash two four dash nine two oh three with two staff conditions.
Thank you. How about a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Up next is item number seven and nine, preliminary plat, PP zero six two four nine two nine four, and final plat PF zero six two four nine two nine five for Sire Estates. Mr. McCumber, talk to us about this project.
All right. Well, good evening. Before you is a planning application for a preliminary plat and final plat. This is for Sire Estates, a one lot and one-track subdivision located at eight oh two Southwest Walnut Street. The property today is currently zoned T-three in the downtown, um downtown area. Uh the proposed use with this is a, um lot one consists of a detached house or detached housing, and tract A will be designated as open space for or future development. Currently, the site consists of four point six four acres and includes one single-family dwelling and detached garage located along Southwest Walnut Street, and one accessory building located south of the home nearly one hundred and fifty feet from the Southwest Walnut Street. The applicant decide, desires to split the property, creating a lot to sell the single-family home and retain the balance of the land. The accessory building will have to be removed from the property to prevent a new legal non-conforming structure on the newly created tract A, as the UDC does not allow accessory structures, buildings, or land uses on tracks or lots without an existing principally permitted land use. The applicant has agreed to file a building permit with the city's building division ahead of the recording of the final plat. This has been documented as a condition of approval of the final plat and is in the staff report. There is no development being proposed for either of the lot or tract at this time. Staff has reviewed the application according to the requirements and standards of the UDC and recommends approval of the preliminary plat with conditions and the final plat with conditions. With that, I open it for questions.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions up here for Dave?
Mr. McCumber, were there any uh opposition letters or any restrictions associated with this?
Uh no, sir. We didn't have any contact outside of the applicant and their survey on this project.
Is the applicant here? Applicant here?
Uh it doesn't appear so.
Okay. Anything else from the commissioners up here about this project? Questions, comments, concerns? Having said that, I would ask for a motion for the preliminary plat.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve uh preliminary pat- plat PP zero six two four nine one nine four for Sire Estates.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and I think we left out the one staff condition. Can the record preserve that, that uh that was as our staff report was written with one staff condition?
Oh, yeah, with staff condition.
Okay. Up next is...
The final.
Oh, the final?
Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve final plat PF zero six two four nine one nine five for Sire, Sire Estates.
Yes. I have a first, and there's one staff condition?
Yes.
Three. There's three staff conditions. I'm getting mixed up tonight. Okay, three staff conditions. All those, do I have a mo- uh a motion already, right?
Yes. A second.
All right, any, okay, got a second. I got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um moving on. Items ten and eleven is the final plat. PF zero six two four nine one seven eight and site plan design review, SPDR zero six two four nine one eight zero for the Dutch Brothers Coffee that we talked about about a month ago. Ms. Chantel Frye?
Yes. So this evening, uh we have the application requesting approval for the site plan design review and the final plat uh for the Dutch Bros Coffee located at seven oh one Northwest Missouri Seven Highway. Uh just to reiterate, it's going to, um during the site plan review or design review, it's a t- three-tenant space that's a pad-site building, uh located on a vacant parcel in the Copper Leaf Shopping Center. And the final plat will consist of just a total one lot containing uh zero point five zero six plus or minus acres. The uh proposed development meets all the requirements and complies with the non-residential guidelines. The exterior building material will consist of the fiber cement siding with the brick veneers and siding accents. Um staff believes the architectural design is in keeping with the other commercial developments. Uh along Northwest Mo Dot Seven Highway, our Mo Seven Highway, overall, the building design and materials are durable, high-quality, and exceed the minimum design standards for non-residential buildings. Uh the landscaping plan has been provided and meets all requirements per the UDC and all buffer requirements. And all vehicle and bicycle parking has been met, and a five-foot ADA compliant will be required, ADA compliant sidewalk will be required along Northwest RD Myes Road and Mo Seven Highway. And staff recommends, or excuse me, the layout and design of the final plat is in compliance with the preliminary plat. So staff reviewed the application and finds that all review criterias have been met. Staff recommends approval of the site plan review application with three conditions, and staff recommends approval of the final plat application with the two conditions. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. Any questions from commissioners? Is the applicant here? Good evening.
Good evening. Uh J. Odell, Aubrey Enterprises, five nine one two Mission Road. Uh, uh, I don't really have anything else to add, to add, just more here to answer any quick questions that you guys have. Um I know there was some quick questions last time, so be ha- happy to answer anything you guys have.
Any questions from the commissioners? I don't have a question, but it looks good. I like the colors. Seems like the blue and the gray and the lighter gray and beige seems to be trending right now, and uh it'd be nice to see that uh corner.
Appreciate that. I'll, I'll pass that along to the architects.
All right. Anything else? No questions up here? Last chance. All right. I will ask for a motion on the final plat.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I move to approve PF zero six two four nine one seven eight Dutch Bros Coffee final plat with staff conditions.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes with two staff conditions. And how about a motion on the site plan design review?
Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve site plan designer view SPDR zero six dash two four dash nine one zero, I'm sorry, nine one eight zero Dutch Bros Coffee with the staff conditions.
With three staff conditions, I have a motion. How about a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, carries unanimously. That's done with the bulk of our business. Think we've got a July monthly development report before we will be excused.
All right. Well, thanks for hanging in there with us. One last item here. We'll run through it real quick and see if there's any questions. Um so taking a look at July twenty twenty-four, just as a recap, um in our category of single-family detached permits, we did see um a little bit of, a little bit more than double increase over last year for the month of July. Um and right now, we are pacing well ahead of twenty twenty-three um for the year in single-family uh permits as well as just total dwelling permits. Let's see. It was kind of shown here on the chart, um compared to previous months throughout the year, and um as you can see, there has consistently been since the beginning of the year, um increases in each of the months for those single-family permits. Code cases are pretty consistent with previous years. Um we have seen a little bit of an uptick in the, in this la- last month of July, um largely around high weeds and grass and uh other nuisances in the city. Some of our more recent uh UDC cases that were brought through the planning commission and city council, um the Dutch Brothers will be updated. Uh you'll see the results of that city council uh when you get the August report, as it was there at the beginning of the month. And lastly, activity with uh sign permits. So um it looks like overall, it's pretty consistent with where we were at last year. Um however, July has seen a little bit more permit activity as far as signs go than, uh in twenty twenty-three. And I believe that is it. Any questions at all?
Any comments or questions about the numbers? Thank you, Dave. Any other business from the commissioners? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much. We'll s- see you next time.